No, I don't.
Any other one? Anyone else have any adjustments to be agenda?
Well, are we going to have principal reports under seven? No.
So.
We only subject them to that once a month.
Review and approve forward budget meetings for November 20th enclosed.
I'll second the motion if you need it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. They are approved. Communications and public comments. Moving right along. Policies.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. Reports. Superintendent.
You may have noticed Alexis Esposito is standing in, Josh.
Yay.
Alexis, do you know everybody? Have we helped have people? Are you thinking?
I know both parents, but others I could get the name on.
You should go around.
Kate Coburn.
Margot Gia.
Evan Moore.
Hi.
Rick Holloway.
Hi, Rick.
Nancy Erickson.
Hello.
Nancy is the Saxons River Principal and Keith is the Principal here at Central.
So I told Alexis she should shout out if things go too fast.
Yes.
Did you also give her the brevity is with? I. Did I? Yes, I did. Right. The less, the better. In some ways. Tomorrow, the state is coming to help me and others. Actually, I understand everything that's contained in the, in ESA. Every student succeeds. Boy, I had a terrible blank moment there for a second.
It's a catchy name.
Yeah. All the new requirements that are in the federal law that was passed a year ago. The state's plan has been accepted by the feds. So a lot of it has to do with assessments and changes in assessments. For instance, the fourth grade, former fourth grade science test is now fifth grade. The former 11th grade S back test is now ninth grade. Which is a pretty big change.
So will that take place this week?
It will. And apparently, there's going to be some sort of phys ed assessment of some sort of. Right. It's going to be, I guess, the kind of test run of it this year. We don't know anything about it, so don't ask, okay?
But the meeting tomorrow is to sort of learn more about what requirements?
Probably, yes. Some of it, no doubt, has to do with a federal grant and those requirements. Yeah, this ESA is a vast law. It's like No Child Left Behind. It's a vast law covering many areas. And assessment is just one of those areas, but it's the one we kind of focus on because it affects us. In a couple of weeks, did anybody sign up, by the way, for the governor's education funding roundtable meeting?
It's not a good day for me.
I'm waiting for the YouTube clips.
Well, I, I am going. I guess happy to sign. That's on the 18th.
You got a special invite, right?
I didn't, well, I did get a, kinda, yeah. But anybody, I mean, I sent that link out and.
I got it from the VSBA.
Right. The VSBA sent it out. Anybody could apply. I wasn't clear from the invitation how they would know who anybody was. You know, I mean, somebody at the Mount Pelear knows probably who I am, but I don't know who they, you know, how they'd know who Rick Holloway was or, you know, or anyone else. Because there was no place to put your role in the registration. Anyway, that's coming up. The, also, this week, I'm expecting to get the draft report for the Integrated Field Review that we were subjected to, I guess, is the right word? In November, October, actually. That review or the results of it somehow need to be integrated into this.
That was one of my questions.
Yeah.
Reading through this.
I've talked a little bit with Wayne Gerson about it. His suggestion was maybe that's a follow-up document that we include after the initial submission or something. I don't know how to, how to deal with it in this short time.
Do we have anywhere, Chris, either coming from the AOE and through you or perhaps through the VSBA, a breakdown of all of the activities being presented to the supervisory unions and the boards by state act and by federal act?
What do you mean? All the requirements?
Yes, yes, yes. Like the, IFR is a state creature, if I followed it correctly.
That's correct.
ESA is going to have activities that originates at the federal level. I'm just wondering if there's any convenient breakdown of that anywhere.
Not particularly.
I have homework.
I do remember a number of years ago, the state actually sent out a survey to all the SUs because they weren't sure themselves about how many things they were asking us to do. So at that time, they compiled a list of, you know, here are all the data gathered and here are all the reports. But that was years ago. No, I, I don't know. You're, you're kind of coming from the side questioning whether one hand knows what the other is doing.
Yes, yes.
I can't answer that. Finally, this isn't really something we've discussed a lot, but you may be aware, there's a great controversy over the pre-K tuitioning program that went back and forth because Agency of Human Services and Agency of Education were both co-in charge of it, which caused a lot of problems, like people needing to get fingerprinted twice was the, that was the one that kind of made, got some publicity. But there were, that was just.
Just the start.
Yeah. That was a pain in the neck, but. So at the end of the last legislative session, one of the bills created this, I guess, panel or discussion between the Agency of Education and Agency of Human Services. They were supposed to come out with a recommendation about what to do going forward. That draft came out today. I haven't read it, but my early ed person gave me the quick summary, which was that they are now recommending the Agency of Education take over the entire program. They'd asked us and the ground what to do and we had recommend, actually, I think all the people in the SU that made a recommendation all said that Human Services should have it, not the Education Agency. But I suppose this will be better. I suppose that the reason it's staying with the Agency of Education is because the funding for this is tied up in the education fund. Certain, it has to do with money. Everything does. And so remember, one of the things we get to do is count these kiddos as part equalized pupil and we get, you know, as part of the tax formula, you get credit, if you want, for equalized pupils. And so since the funding for the program is tied up in the education fund, they probably wanted to keep it there because that funding is probably a lot more stable than the Agency of Human Services funding, which covers everything from soup to nuts and everything in between. So that's the news. That's what I got.
And WNESU Board?
Yeah, so, meeting Wednesday night, not tomorrow, but the night afterward and the, well, there's two action items. There's a request for a half-year sabbatical, but the other, the big item is approving the SU budget. We came pretty close to that last week and there was just a question about a couple of figures that needed to be answered before we came back.
So I am unable to attend as one of our representatives that evening, so I don't know if we want to replace me.
It'd be good if somebody can do it.
If I'm Wednesday, I go straight to hockey.
Well, I will be there.
I'll be there.
Evan will be there.
Okay.
The two of us anyways.
And then we could send an email to.
See if.
Sam.
Sam. I know she also has standing Wednesday problem.
Write to her right now or reply to the email she sends saying she couldn't make it tonight.
As a penalty.
Yeah.
A Wednesday.
Although it's more properly a question at the SU Board, Chris, have the state numbers come in? Will they be rolled in for Wednesday?
No, there are no, there are no state numbers in the SU.
Okay.
Those all go into the local budgets. But what, again, will be done with the meeting. Back through, there'll be the full budget for the SU, including the new food service, this in-house food service and the, she has the assessments done, which actually gave you an indication, I think, of kind of where you were, you were headed.
And that was the part that was missing the other night? She hadn't quite finished that, right?
No, she had done those. There were a couple of figures in special ed that we needed to go back and check. But Rockingham did pretty well in the assessment, so it really was not bad news for the budget there, which is nice for a change because sometimes Rockingham's kind of taking it on the chin with the SU assessment.
We did hire the, what's her name? The woman from VSBA to do the superintendent search.
Right.
You guys, if everybody heard that, but Mr. Vanke did sign the contract with her, correct?
I don't know though. Brendan Edum. Did you see that word recall?
Yeah. The closer you get to retirement, the more your memory comes back.
By the time I've been gone for a while, still true. Brendan Edum, who was most recently superintendent. Ribboned up. She's, she'll be great.
Any other questions about anything that's happened at the NESU Board? Kate's the only person who hasn't been there, has a lead. Unfinished business for discussion or action? Review, approve Act 46, alternative structured documents. See, alternative structures, link on WNESU website for copies of those documents. And we have the book right here.
Which is, so before we start, if you're at home watching this, it will be after the meeting happened, but you can look at the same documents the board and we are all looking at. Go to the WNESU website. On the right-hand side of the page, there is a link for alternative structure proposal. Click on that. There'll be, you'll go into a folder with a number of different items, but the item you want to look at is called alternative. It's called. Let's go back. It's. Okay. Documents for Board Discussions slash Approval. And that's where every, there are a number of others, but that's the one that contains all of these documents the board is approving tonight. So today, I added a wad of board minutes from all the different districts. And I guess the thing to do with them is, yours are in here. See if, this is everything I could lay my hands on. I mean, if you look at through these and say, you know, I don't see the minutes for that meeting that we did such and so, I can try to find them, but. And in the front, I started off with the ad hoc committee minutes. So the first, I think, maybe four sets are the meetings at the high school that you had. So that's the first big chunk of the pack. What I didn't do was like make a copy of every single board meeting that you talked about Act 46 in one way or another, because I just.
Probably a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, I would have had to copy every single meeting minute from the. Yeah, every board for the whole time. You know, I hope, you know, there's a reason for doing this, that somebody's actually going to read these sometime, but. Item number two, that I kind of, before we get into this, I want to ask you how you want to deal with this. So I've already gotten a little bit of feedback from another board member from another board who had a question about some wording and didn't like the wording in one case. And what that kind of made me realize is, well, I can't just willy-nilly change the wording now because this is a consensus document. If you have disagreements, we're going to have to figure out a way to come together and agree on what it's going to say. And I think probably the only way to do that is to, once again, call together the ad hoc committee, probably right before the Christmas vacation, and kind of hammer out how that's going to look.
So if we did that, if we did with that method, what would be the format for providing some wording feedback?
After that, you mean?
No, before.
Well, this is your chance. So Westminster's going to meet tomorrow night. High School is going to review it Monday night. Athens and Drafton are going to review it, not this week, but next week, Thursday, and that'll be everybody.
So in the back, you have appendix, the, you have the Westminster Board where they would sign off and our, where we sign off, I see.
Yeah, and I haven't done Ask Draft.
They meet later, right?
Yeah, I haven't.
I didn't know if there was a.
No, that's.
Reason for that or just to just.
I haven't gotten to it yet.
So if we end up in this situation where we have a Yuletide gathering of the ad hoc committee to prepare the final language, then that puts us in January, going back to all the boards for final sign-off. Do I follow that correctly or have I missed?
I suppose, I suppose.
Either that or each board gives the power to.
You authorize the people who are attending this. That's the other, yeah.
Alternative.
Right. You could authorize whoever goes to this ad hoc committee, and any of you could, to make an agreement. It's all a little awkward and rushed, I think. So, I mean, I guess the things you need to, there's a million things here you could question, but I guess the things you need to focus on are first, the first nine pages, 10 pages, which is the overall draft of the report. But then you need to take a pretty close look at this, what, your sign-off sheet. And see if you're in agreement with that. But there are other places too that you might have, I mean, it's a pretty complex document. For example, one of the Westminster members was, had some questions about that board calendar thing and felt like it was too. What's the word I'm looking for? Too. He was signing you up for a process that you might not really want to go through with.
Do you want to start going?
Yeah, I think you should, yeah. And so I will try to compile into the many meeting minutes, but try to just kind of compile the questions.
So some of the things that I have notes on.
So are you starting, are you starting from the very front?
Starting from.
Or from the board actions?
No, I'm starting with the overview document. So on the second page, and some of mine are just little, little things, but, you know, I questioned the second thing down, K through six students in Westminster attend either Westminster Elementary School or Westminster West Elementary. That structure is different now, right?
Where are you, second page?
Second page, second paragraph down.
Yeah, that, that's, I thought I had fixed that. Okay.
And then the third paragraph down, it designates the middle school as Rockingham Middle School. I just felt like I should say Bellas Falls Middle School. Says that twice there.
Be, you're there. It's the middle school of the Rockingham School District.
It is, right.
No one has the Bellas Falls.
They just list every other school by its name and I just felt like that should be by its name also. I didn't even pick up on that one. I did not go through spelling.
On page three, I, let's see, the second bullet mark down, it starts with the word neighboring. And this is just small, but the districts to the, it says east, but it should say districts to the west. I think if I got the second bullet down in the middle of page three, starting with the word neighboring. And this is about halfway through that bullet point, says districts to the east. So my next one, this one is just semantics. Page five, under part three, why a preferred government structure is not necessary, the second one down. After reading all the documents, I think I, this is probably the correct wording, but when it says that WNESU has students and staff ratios that exceed the state averages, in my mind, that reads that we're doing like worse than what they are recommending. Although I see the wording is fairly consistent throughout the whole document and I got it after I read the rest of the documents, what's that saying? But when I just read it first, but again, that could just be the way the state refers to that kind of thing.
It was the way we referred to it. You could just say are higher than instead of.
Right.
Higher than and exceed are the same.
I know.
Or could say.
Better than.
Or better than.
The gloss, I think, would be the ratio superior to the state averages.
Just something that clarifies that.
I get you. Exceed the recommended state average might be, would that make it?
Exceed the recommended? No, because that still gives a kind of negative connotation in a way, unless you're supposed to be exceeding, right? And that's where you just have to clarify.
That was why I was, it might, if something like that, might clarify it a little bit better because, or exceeds the, exceeds the state expectation instead of averages.
Or maybe, yeah, or you could say.
That's what I was trying to say.
Higher number of students per staff member, something like, something more clear.
It's one of, it is one of those semantic things, depending on how you look at it, because if it was written staff to student ratio, then we wouldn't want to exceed.
Right. So I do have several other things, but I just got a message that the bus is pulling into the middle school. So.
Want me to go again?
Do you want, could you?
I'm willing to. You're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine. I'd text the teacher then I. Thank you.
Strange persons coming to pick you up. Are you on the approval?
Make sure he has the insurance, grab my license.
Think you're friends.
You're strange.
So this is the band bus coming back to the middle school.
Okay, all right. So I imagine I'll be right in front of this school.
Thank you, Nancy.
Sure.
Anything to get out of.
I was going to say, I would have taken that car.
I asked Keith first. He had his chance.
Okay, I'm just, if anyone else, I just want to let him know.
Well, we've gotten to page five. Did anyone else have things, pages one through five? Did anyone else have things, pages one through five?
I have a, I have a couple of small matters as well, overlooking any stylistic considerations. Page three, right where Margot pointed out the east-west problem. If we're going to go to pains to refer to the Bellas Falls Union High School, isn't Leland and Gray also a union high school?
Yeah.
And more-- On page four, I have this nice section on the debt and taxation rates as a differentiating factor between Grafton, Athens, and then Westminster. It seems like there should be language in there reminding the state that debt was specifically added in Act 49 as a consideration to be made. And so if there could be some language with that Act 49 reference, I haven't thought about what the language would be.
Do we not have a bond on the high school or any of our things that we--
Well, we have bonds, but no one would be merging with us because of our operating structure.
It was just pointing out for--
We're back on page five.
So next page, page six. This was just an awkward sentence. In the first paragraph of part four, the sentence is, in addition, it's sort of in the middle of the first paragraph under part four. In addition, and most remain to this issue, as a result of the merger study, all WNESU board members serving at that time get a perspective on the functioning of their SU is and a sense of what actions might be. I think there's just some extra words in there.
Yeah, that's a, that's a weird sentence. Let me fix that one.
It almost looked like two sentences that got merged.
I was just reading, just trying to like, something about this doesn't seem right, but I can't make sense of what it is, that doesn't seem--
The verb sentences aren't lining up.
Yeah.
I have another one on page seven. The--
Did you have a day off from work, Margot?
I actually took a little bit of time this afternoon, really. The second bullet down, it starts with staff development. I agree with the sentiment, but I think it's a little, this whole thing is a little misleading. It says, in order to ensure that all WNESU students enter the high school with common experiences and grades pre-K through eighth instruction. So I agree that, you know, that's our goal, and that's what we want, but with school-- I just think it's a little misleading, because in seven and eight, we still have school choice in some districts, and they do enter the high school with different experiences, and so it's not completely-- it's just a little misleading.
Well, I had some issues with that. I actually made some changes to that paragraph to get it to where it is. Another board member from another board had, took issue with the word "all" in there in that third sentence, and "all staff," because-- and I had already removed the word "all" from the title, because--
It all staff development.
Yeah, because it sounded very adamant. All staff development, well, it's like, no, you know, some schools-- that's not the case. So--
And maybe that'd be the, every place where "all" falls in there, because it would almost, it almost speaks to Margot's issue if we, if it said, in order to ensure that WNESU students enter the high school with common experiences in grade pre-K through eight.
Yeah, how are you gonna, you know--
If you say "all," then--
Right.
But if you just say, the WNESU students-- when they're, when they're in seventh and eighth grade, if they go to Compass or someplace, they're technically not.
They're not having common experiences.
They don't have, yeah.
Well, then they're not technically WNESU students.
We have no control over what they are learning or not learning when they're not in district.
Yeah, I think some-- Work needs to be done in that section.
So my next one would be on the bottom of page eight, onto the top of page nine. The bullet, the last bullet there on page eight that says, deliver all of above at a cost that parents, voters, and taxpayers value. The last part of that bullet, which is on the top of page nine-- I just put a question mark here again, that, you know, it says, the ad hoc governance review committee views this as clear evidence that the communities not only value the schools, they value the local fundamental democratic structures, the town meeting, and the elected town school boards. I thought that was a little bit of a stretch to say that, you know, that was-- and also not opposed to leaving it.
Well, what would you suggest to some--
So the ad hoc governance review committee, is that, that big board committee that we had, or is that--
Yeah, maybe--
That is the little--
The big group, that's the big group.
Includes all of you.
But Gang of Four did one thing, and that is all.
And I don't think people have a problem with all of these things, I just don't know that it's clear evidence of these things. That these, you know, that town, you know, in some ways, town meeting and--
I, I agree that--
I mean, especially--
It seems thrown in there in a way.
It does, because if you look at the bullet points, deliver all of the above at a cost that parents, voters, and taxpayers value.
Right, it's not about--
It's not about the bullet point.
School boards and having a town meeting. Yeah. All right. That's a good point.
Let's see, why did I mark this one? Oh. So I'm at the last page of this part of the document, page 10, under Appendix G. It's talking about the calendar. And the last sentence says, adherence to a calendar like this will enable the SU staff to work nearly as effectively as an SU office in a merged district. And I kind of, I get why we want to put a sentence like that in there, but I also, I'm not sure I fully am free with it. Because I think by keeping each of the individual boards, we continue to maintain a lot more work at the SU level. And whether that's nearly as effective, I'm not sure. But it seemed a little-- it was enough to make me just put a question mark next to it.
Well, it might be more-- truer statement is to, might be to work as effectively as possible.
Yeah. And I understand that we want to try to convince the state, because there are a lot of merits, but I also want to be honest about-- So that was my only things that I had marked down under the overview document. I don't know if anyone else had any-- notes for that document.
I'm looking at the minimal things that I had questions about.
I think there are-- like, hopefully, you know, one more thorough read will go through, because I think there are, I didn't pick up on all, like, the little, little typos or little-- my ones, major things, but they weren't-- I think there were probably a few little things I missed, too.
Well, like I said, I'm not wed to this document, so I have concerns about stuff the most of the time. Shut up.
I do have some questions about verbs and things to point out in some of the other appendix.
All right, do you want to look at this? Don't hold back, Margot.
Well, I just also don't have a rush. Anybody, if like, if people are still looking at that first one.
As Chris told us last week, we should read this before we got here, so if we hadn't read it--
Okay, so in Appendix F-- Appendix F is the rationale actions underway to support retention of current governance structure. It's a sideways document.
Grid.
Grid, but bigger grid, not the data grid. My only thing that I marked on this one was under number 12, which is the changing grade configurations at Saxon River and Central, so they each school. And under the far-right column, which is the programming to ensure equitable opportunities-- or no, that's not that column. Notes and recommendations column, which is the far-right one. The very last sentence-- I wasn't sure that-- so this whole thing was not recommended, and it is recommended that all boards meet only once each month.
Oh, right, that's misplaced.
Yeah, it seems misplaced.
Which one?
It's under 12.
Yeah, that shouldn't be there.
I think it's a great recommendation, but I don't think it's in the right place.
Oh, I know, that was supposed to be--
That's supposed to be in 13.
In the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's supposed to be in 13.
Well, in parallel to what you observed in the overview document, Margot--
Yeah.
Appendix B, the third bullet point, it has those troublesome "alls" floating around. Although since this is a Rockingham document, maybe not as troublesome.
Is Appendix B the Rockingham Board Actions?
Yes.
Yeah.
All WNESU students, all staff training.
Yeah, that, and that's just a cut and paste from the other one, so-- needs work.
So I'm-- So I think we'll have to spend some time with this particular document, but maybe before we--
Which one?
The one that you were just talking about, the Rockingham Board, because that's what we have to sign off on.
Yeah.
Part of my questioning about that had to do with the proposed calendar for all the boards.
Right.
And I just, maybe we should have a discussion about that proposed calendar before we have fuller discussions about what Rockingham is committing to do. I'm gonna wait, take a quick look at that, I'm just gonna do a quick check in there.
Appendix G.
And thank you, Nancy.
So, I think I told you before, this was-- this was all Wayne's recommendation, and then I kind of gulped when I read it and added in the stuff about the SU goals, because that's more how we actually run things. And the, as I recall, the concern I had from another board member from another board was that, you know, this was committing to-- kind of this step after step after step that that person wasn't particularly interested in doing with their board, but-- and I don't know how you feel about-- I mean, I know what, it's obvious what Wayne was trying to accomplish.
Yeah, and I think there's, you know, there's a lot of-- there's a lot of positive things if-- you know, there could be a lot of positive things if we met in this kind of structure. I also was starting to, personally, starting to question, I mean, in a lot of, and maybe this is because I was on the merger committee studying all this, and I've also had a lot of experience working with the other districts over time. But, you know, I felt like, you know, at some level, isn't the SU board supposed to function as sort of the clearinghouse of ideas on how we're, how we can be efficient across the whole SU, instead of having this whole separate, like, all the people from all the boards getting together for these separate meetings? In some ways, it almost felt like duplicating efforts. Now, I realize that not everyone sits on the SU board, but maybe-- but it's, again, it felt like duplicating efforts a little bit. So maybe there's a few SU board meetings where everybody is encouraged to attend, maybe twice a year, to accomplish some of those things, instead of having yet a whole separate meeting.
So which meetings in particular are you talking about, instead of--
You know, like in May--
The biannual meeting--
Yeah, basically the both biannual meetings, where we're sort of looking across the SU. And I, I get the idea, like, it's good to see the other schools and, I mean, because that was really helpful, to go and visit the other schools and learn about their issues. But again, in some ways, that is the function of the SU board, is that we're communicating across districts. That was just something, sort of--
So is, your question kind of is, is there a way to accomplish this without yet more meetings?
Yeah.
Or is there another way?
And duplication of efforts, I mean, to me, that was, that's a big thing. I mean, one of the, one of the most frustrating things about being on the SU board for me is listening to you repeat yourself.
Again and again.
Yeah, I mean, and since I only really have to listen to you repeat yourself twice, and then sit there aware, it's like, wow, how many times has he had to repeat himself?
I think how Jack Breyer feels, listening to me four times.
Maybe he enjoys listening to you as much as he does himself. Hi, Jack.
So is there a way to accomplish this without another meeting?
You know, and maybe, again, it's-- I mean, again, it's the function of an SU board in a way, to look at these things. You know, I agree, it'd be great to have other people from the boards attend some of those meetings sometimes, because you do get a broader sense across the district, or could.
Yeah, I, yeah. It'd almost be like the individual boards are almost more like-- Yeah, I don't, yeah, it'd almost be like the individual boards are almost more like trustees, and the SU board should be like passing down some of this stuff.
Well, it's, there's always this 10,000-pound gorilla in the room, which is the TSU board has real responsibility for most things, curriculum especially.
Well, I began to wonder, especially reading through these documents, I'm like, what's almost left for, I mean, I understand there are still things left at the individual board levels, but the big things are consolidated, or we're looking for more ways to consolidate, and...
Somebody quipped elsewhere in the middle of this process, well, if you're not building or renovating a building, you don't have much to do from a local board.
I mean, we technically still have, you know, staff, but...
Right.
You know.
Right.
I sometimes am beginning to feel like the SU board war is happening there, more and more we're talking about, and even in these documents, we're talking about putting more at the SU board level. And what does concern me about that and staying in our structure is that we don't have the transparency, thank you, Sherri, I know that you've mentioned this a lot, but we don't have the transparency coming down to the towns, because the SU board votes on the budget, which has a lot of big items in it, we get our portion, which gets built into our budget, but that doesn't get seen at the town levels. So there is...
Gets complained about, but there's not much you can do about it by the time...
Right, that's, that's really a function of, that would seem to really be a function of individual board members' motivation, is you get David Clark showing up at the SU board meetings every time, every time, reminding folks that he's not a voting representative from the Union High School Board, he just happens to be on the Union High School Board and be there, so that he is informed and aware.
But we do get handed this big chunk, and the more that we consolidate as, you know, the more and more that chunk is going to get bigger, and the less transparency we will have. So that kind of all plays through my mind a little bit as we talk about this, which I'm saying, beginning to all of a sudden sound like, wow, I didn't realize I was sounding so strong, you know, I'm sounding stronger than I thought I was, but I'm kind of talking out loud here and realizing that, you know, as you, as you read the documents and you realize, well, we're looking for more ways to consolidate, we're looking for, and you look at the calendar, and it's saying, you know, yeah, that we're continually building that into our structure. It's something for us to think about. Not saying we don't move forward with this proposal, but it is, I'm doing a lot of talking here.
No, you're doing a great job, Margot, I totally appreciate listening to you and hope you continue to keep talking about this and opening our eyes to these things. You're right, I mean, I heard that come up before when this was first presented, a lot of, somebody's, you know, a couple people said, wow, that's a lot of meetings.
Well, if you want to parse the text closely, first of all, remember that whatever we send out is not really binding on anything, because the state may choose to ignore all of it, as Dr. Arisa Savage has so eloquently highlighted.
May or may not.
Yes, the Board of Ed may, they'll cherry pick what they want, or make up something new, and the Secretary of Ed likewise, and that furthermore, the Appendix B is, we support convening biannual meetings, whether it'll work out that we can actually do so, if we can herd all the cats together, it remains to be seen.
But we should put forward what we feel like is our best proposal.
Oh, I agree, I'm not, I'm not...
I'm not saying this is not, I'm just saying that...
I'm not saying that we should be disingenuous, no, but...
I think there's, in a way, I kind of felt like this was maybe, the calendar was sort of more of an idealistic, or one version of an idealistic approach, but it sounded like there was a lot of duplication to me. And so either we need to be very, you know, specific about where the SU board fits or doesn't fit, and where convening of all the boards fits or doesn't fit.
How about if I add at the end of Appendix B, where it says, Rockingham Board will adopt the goal setting calendar described in Appendix G, if they feel like it.
What are other people feeling about the calendar? Busy. I mean, I mean, I look at you, Rick, and how many meetings, extra, you know, meetings you go to because of sitting on various committees or being, you know, the head of the board, and that's, it's a lot, and you just want to make sure that when you go to meetings, that they're effective and, you know, not duplicating the efforts of other...
I don't want to go to any meetings for the sake of having a meeting.
Right.
Just...
Well, and your point or concept is a good one, Margot, that this calendar calls out some biannual meetings, and why could those not be just regular SU board meetings?
That look at them.
That happen to have these as agenda items, or primary agenda items, I was trying to say, could be talked up among the boards, and we're doing this, we really encourage you to be there, even if you're not the voting rep, so you have a sense of what's going on.
Commutations.
Yeah, because I mean, that's, that was one of the things, when I first read this, not even, not even tonight, is that every SU meeting is a meeting of the town, high school, of the town and high school boards, it's just not every member of the town and high school boards.
And under May, another one, is like this annual retreat, and I'm not sure I understood it.
I don't want to go to any retreats.
Annual retreat with individual boards for review of SU goals and discussion of local goals.
I'm retiring to get out of Philly.
So I don't know if it's like, as a Rockingham board, we have a retreat looking at the SU goals?
That was the concept, yeah.
And our own goals?
Some boards have retreats, this board used to have an annual retreat.
I can see, you know, we, we don't tend to have a focus like, here are our goals for the year, kind of...
At which you set these goals, but I think what makes that hard, though, is that so many of the things are at the SU level now, it's hard to have local goals.
Well, that's, you know, I mean, unless you're going into a construction project.
Right.
Or you're dealing with the after-school or before, you know, but then all of a sudden, that stuff now we're looking at, it's...
Right.
Consolidating, or potentially...
Right.
Food services even going consolidation, you know, so it's...
Now, that's, and that's the problem with the concept, I believe, the concept of a board retreat and board goals is that they're individual, and the SU has essentially absorbed everything, I mean, either, either because it's practical, or it's required under the law.
And as we sit here, talk through this and think about it, it makes even less sense for a lot of the things for the individual boards to come up with goals, unless they are specific to like, the facilities or infrastructure, because if all of this is about equity in education, everything, then the SU should be looking at setting these goals that are district-wide and not...
And yet, I don't want to take away from the, you know, the local boards still have, you know, like, we should be looking at the SU goals and saying, how does that look at our schools? And so there is that level of taking those goals and then looking and talking about how that really looks.
We should be thinking about goals that we want to achieve and sending them up to the SU at some point, but I think that having a retreat to do that isn't...
You could just do it at a board meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, I mean, maybe it's just that...
We're going to have a line, and we're going to have an agenda item that says, let's talk about goals.
There'll be an agenda item that says, you know...
In the meeting before, we're going to talk about goals.
Rockingham goals.
And yet, if some people want to have a retreat, a separate meeting, they could, like, but why restrict ourselves to...
We seem to have a leaning sentiment towards trying to strike this notion of the coordinated calendar, Appendix G, and therefore, the references to it that occur in Appendix B and in the overview document, is that the...
I don't think I have a problem with the concept of a general calendar, because, I mean, most of the items, when you go through, are pretty much what we do, you know, we look at budgets at around the same time, we vote on the budgets in the same month, generally, or within, you know, a block of time. I think it's just this idea of, how do each of the boards relate to one another, and, you know, that I have more of a, just wanting to, clarification around and making sure that we're not...
Okay. So instead of like biannual meeting at the May and November, it could be, you know, full meeting of all boards at the, at the SU meeting.
Because I don't think the ideas behind why those meetings are bad, you know, I think there is good things that come from all of us meeting together and talking about these issues, but I think it's just the structure that just felt a little redundant to me.
So you're in favor of the biannual meeting, or you're not?
It should be a part of existing meeting with invite including everybody.
I think, I think what I'm hearing is that we're in favor of it, but not as a separate meeting, that it's, it's one, that at those scheduled SU meetings, all board members are encouraged to attend.
And for example, the rest of the first May biannual meeting, you know, I do think it'd be, I know that the principals and the SU representatives meet all the time, and it is good for us to hear feedback from them about ideas on ways to collaborate more across, you know, certain areas and disciplines and functions. So I think having a report could be a good, you know, is a good thing, we haven't institutionalized that, but again, so again, I don't think the ideas are bad, I just...
Yeah, and at that particular meeting, I would hope that we'd hear from a principal's representative and not each individual.
That's true, you know.
That the principals prepare, the principals of the team prepare their report, and it's not each principal giving a report.
Exactly, I think that's an important clarification.
What?
I don't think I would find that.
And that it's not really specific, and that it shouldn't be specific to like, any individual...
School.
School or town, that it's like, as the principals, we see, you know, these 1938 textbooks that we've got really late.
Right, like ways, proposed ideas, again, for efficiency and bulk purchasing.
But you're okay with that being in there?
Yeah.
I think, I think if nothing else, that's a good reminder for the SU board that the principals do actually collaborate together and to hear something from them, so I don't think that that's...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's always helpful, you, you often share at our meetings, like, oh, when the principals were all together, this came up, that kind of thing is really helpful to hear.
All right, so, so annual treat, may or may not have.
Are you getting all this in heaven, in case you're our representative at the...
Well, I already know that I'm going to be...
It might be an annual treat, or it might be simply to review the SU goals and set any local board goals, right? Biannual meeting of SU board, at which all the other boards would be invited to include a joint report from principals.
Or perhaps reminded they are always invited.
Well, this would be special, because it would be kind of...
It'd be very special on November, when we hear the state of the SU report.
Right, but it does make some sense to have one in, I suppose, in May, because you're pre-budget at that.
Pre-budgetting at that point, and maybe other, you know, like, they're always welcome to attend, but maybe there's two that they are encouraged to attend, you know? I mean, you look at our board, right, three of the five are there.
Yeah, when you have a full SU meeting, which we've had lately...
There's a lot of people.
It is a lot of, it's the majority of all the boards, you know?
If we had, if we had all the board members from, from all the boards, we wouldn't be able to do it at the SU.
Is it the high school?
Yeah, we could do it at the high school.
So some of that will affect the, going back to the document we're supposed to sign off on, which is the Rockingham Board Actions, some of that discussion will affect some of the wording and stuff for this.
So, that's looking like a major revision there.
I also wanted to question, and maybe, although I think from your comment earlier in the meeting, Chris, that, so the last bullet point on the Rockingham Board Actions is about the integrated field review, and that we're supposed to be aware that they conducted the review for strengths and weaknesses within the WNESU, and that we are committed, as board, to a full review and timely implementation of recommendations included in that report? And I just kind of questioned, I feel hesitant to commit to something that I haven't seen yet. So I'm committed to a full review of it, but, and while I probably will agree to implementing most of it, you know, I don't want to commit to something and then be like, that's not practical, or that's not the first thing we want to target.
So going back to this...
We need to see it first.
Going back to this document, just backing up to kind of complete for me, the, the calendar thing.
Oh, yeah.
I think the Rockingham Board commits to adopting a common goal-setting and budget development calendar. I think that, I don't know if we have to have the calendar set in place, but similar to, or...
Right.
Something, you know, the whole thing, the whole, that whole thing doesn't need to get trashed, it's just that the actual calendar needs, we'd like to see some...
So we're not saying that this is the final.
Right, we are, we would, I think we'd be willing to commit to adopting a common goal-setting and budget development calendar.
Yes, at least I agree with that.
Yeah, just not this one.
Or this one with modifications.
Yeah, I got, all right, so the wording isn't so bad there, it's more, it's the calendar itself that needs to be...
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, because all that discussion we had doesn't mean that that bullet point is out.
So, and now going back to...
The last bullet.
The last thing. So I, I actually worked on, if you look at the top of page eight...
Page eight in the overview?
The overview document. I've worked on that wording a little bit there and I... I don't know if it's much different.
I mean, I think it's fine to commit, in my mind, to commit us to a full review. It's just the timely implementation, which I guess, you know, to be fair, that is a vague statement because what is timely? But it just made me a little nervous to like commit to implementing something that I don't know what it is.
Well, so if we just drop the words and timely implementation out of there.
Yeah, that would make me feel better.
Well, in a sense, is it even redundant? Are we under obligations of the IFR process or was the obligation simply this day when everyone came to visit us and how they sent us the report and at that, the IFR obligation is complete?
You know, now that you kind of have mentioned this, I think Wayne sort of made an assumption that there's recommendations coming in this report and I'm not particularly sure that's true. I mean, there may be.
Right.
But I don't know that. It's more like a report card for all the schools in the district. So, you know, it might say, well, you know, you're doing great in school climate, you know, you need to do better in student achievement, you know, testing or something, you know? I'm not...
So the report may highlight weaknesses without recommending corrections.
Right. So, so maybe you just want to say, commit to a full review of that report.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking.
Yeah.
To a full review and consideration of recommendations included in that report.
I mean, my understanding of it actually is that we'll get this report back and then our, it will inform how our continuous improvement plan should be changed. I mean, it's, frankly, I think it's more of an internal document than it is a board document, but at least Wayne doesn't really know. We don't even know because it's the first time they're doing it.
And this is one of those things where if we commit to implementing recommendations, and like everyone said, that we haven't seen yet or don't know, they may not even be feasible to implement.
Right.
So I think if we say a full review...
Full review sounds good to me, yeah, because you've got the SIPs and another part of this.
Right.
We hope with them by the time we submit those.
So the other, on the Rockingham Board actions, it kind of goes back to the calendar, but the, on the first page of the Rockingham Board actions, the bottom bullet, which is the fourth bullet, it talks about the calendar, which we've already talked about, maybe modifying some of that, but the bolded statement, the Rockingham Board supports convening biannual meetings with the Union High School Board. So the calendar suggests everybody, not just us meeting with the Union High School. So there's just a consistency problem.
All right. These meetings should be rotated. Yeah, I was initially reading that as the same as the calendar, but it's not, is it?
Well, it is. I think it's the calendar.
I think it's meant to be, but the language is not matching.
But the language specifies the Union High School because when you read it in the calendar, I think, when you read it somewhere else, it says the town boards...
Right.
...meet biannually with the high school board. But then when it translated into the Rockingham document, actually in the Westminster document too, it just says our board and the high school board, but really the idea, right, is to mean all boards.
Because then it says these meetings which may be rotated among the towns.
Right. So it's just a consistency.
So it should say supports biannual meetings with...
Other...
Other SU.
Other districts, other SU districts.
With the other boards.
With the other boards or, and not say, you know, exactly where.
Okay. Yep.
But again, that's still kind of a redundant meeting to the SU meeting where all the boards are because the high school board is always there.
Right. We've, so, that's why we've talked about, right, having...
Yeah, so if we redraft the calendar page, I mean, we'd want to...
You have to change all the language in that bullet point.
Yeah, that would need to be changed, yeah. That's okay. I'll be happy to change that calendar page.
Just keep thinking like it's going to be your calendar.
I know. When I do that, it's...
So I suspect that things will change even more. You know, we are the first board to be discussing this and I'm sure that the other boards will also have things, so the next steps will be important. Depending, well, you know, I was going to say, I feel comfortable having Evan, you know, I could go either way, either having Evan represent Rockingham at a meeting and talking about all the changes or having it come back to the boards. Depends, I guess, on how many changes are made through...
Yeah. It also depends, I think, to a large degree on, I mean, if I go to Westminster tomorrow and they say virtually the same thing about this.
Right.
And if Athens and Grafton say virtually the same thing and the high school goes, then, you know, I could probably just rewrite the document to everybody's...
But if there is major differences between boards...
Those would have to be worked out, yeah.
You know, and there potentially could be, we all have different interests.
Yeah.
And I just want to point, put out that I'm appreciative of the, you know, the work that all, when all the boards came together to talk about this and then, you know, the smaller group that you sit on and then I appreciate the work of those groupings to come to the, you know, it's a lot of work to get to this point of agreement and, and thank you for you and Wayne and everybody else at the SU that is putting all the data and everything into this. It's a lot.
So my assumption is we're not going to get to be approving this this evening, so we have reviewed it, we have reviewed it pretty well. Thank you very much, Margot, for the detailed, like, review because...
Editorial.
Yeah, it was extremely helpful. Do we want to kill any more time on that this evening or do business for discussion action?
I don't, but if now, if anybody else on the board has a chance to, wants to say anything, it's a good time to do it.
What is our next board meeting? Are we, is the normal board meeting the, the third?
Mm-hmm.
Right, two weeks from now?
Yes.
Okay. That's sort of the normal board...
Eighteenth, yeah.
Yeah?
And we'll have, that's probably one...
And we'll have, we'll have budget? Is there a budget meeting at the...
The 25th is yours.
Yeah, parents and I were...
That's right. That's right. So it's just KES, SIP.
Which is now with the state.
What's that?
It's now with the state, we had a video conference with them the other day, working on a section of it to give us a model of...
Remind us what SIP is.
Continuous Improvement.
Each school has one, right?
Yeah.
And then, did I hear you say that it gets approved? Like, you come up with a plan, it gets approved...
By you.
Then goes to the state?
Well, the state is taking an active interest in these now because they're requiring them both for receiving grant funds and they're, they want them to reflect actions taken after the integrated field review. So we're told they're kind of okay the way they are this year, but by next year, there's a very specific format required. It sounds like with Keith, they started to tell you what that very specific format is.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's what Missy and I have been saying. There really is a way these are supposed to look.
Yeah. Well, we asked them, do they have a model to share? And they've gone, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll share a model with you. And by the end of the conversation, it was, well, will you share with us what you have and all the support documents that belong to the creation of your SIP and we'll take a portion of it and create a model back for you? So...
So I guess they didn't have anything to hand.
We'll have a model as soon as you give it to us.
Nancy would be able to provide that.
Be interesting to see how it comes back, yeah. But in terms of looking at the future, our next meeting is the 18th. And once upon a time, that was going to be at Saxon River.
We haven't got there yet.
Okay.
You're skipping ahead on the agenda.
Sorry.
Appointments and resignations is next. Durarno, director's comments.
I'll thank Nancy again for going to select Caleb and allowing my fellow board member to continue her...
Team flexible and helping out like he did.
Now, we can finish the date of the next board meeting, which is December 18th.
And budget meeting also?
Is part of, we've just been doing our budget meeting is part of that meeting.
Yeah, so...
I think that's worked very well.
Okay.
Having been through several budget seasons, this has had actually the most participation, I think, by having it in the meeting.
Good point.
Saxon River?
Saxon River, sounds good. Nice and toasty there, Nancy?
Oh, yeah.
They'll have a Christmas tree.
Hot cocoa.
Okay, and unless there's any reason not to, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.